Hello, mic check, much better. Good evening, thank you for joining us, we're gonna go ahead and call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting to order. Determine if a quorum is present, quorum is present. Uh, we have a special invocation guest here with us tonight, uh, Ms. Haley, would you like to? I'll let you introduce him. Pastor.
This is Pastor Dan Milford, pastor at Covenant Presbyterian Church.
Thank you, let us pray. Holy God, I give you thanks for the people gathered today who strive to serve you, uh, and, and the people they represent, the council people, the mayor, the, the city officials, uh, city servants, uh, we pray that you would be with them in all parts of their work and in their family lives as well, strengthening them, encouraging them. Holy God, I pray that when, uh, we as citizens or, uh, people coming through the community or working in the community are not at our best, that you would, help them to find, uh, extra patience from you to, to deal with us, to work with us. We pray that you would encourage them, uh, as they embark on a new year with, uh, whatever projects are, are coming up, whatever challenges they may face. That you would give them wisdom, uh, compassion, and keep in mind, uh, those, uh, in greatest need within our community and, uh, experiencing the greatest loneliness in our community, uh, that they may be equipped to, uh, lead us and, and serve us well. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen, thank you Pastor Mil.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Pledge of Allegiance, Chief Covey, will you lead us? Thank you, Chief. Okay, uh, first up, we have citizen comments, we have, uh, Ms. Judy Crawford.
Good evening, Judy Crawford, 107 West Castle Lane, I'm here representing Fiesta Castle Hills, let y'all know that it is coming up on April 20th, uh, Saturday from 10 to 5:00 PM, we're gonna have the parade and the fair and the food court and everything, and, uh, I know we have a little bit tighter space, but we're gonna be creative and find a way to fit everybody in there. Uh, we've already had a really good response, so people are calling us now to be a part of it, so it's really great. Um, we wanted to, uh, welcome, uh, John and Elise Russ. Uh, everybody should know them, they're from Clementine, they are going to be our grand marshals this year for our parade. Our medal is, everything's our, um, things are cooking in Castle Hills, um, and in honor of them, because you've brought a lot of, uh, notoriety to our city, and we appreciate it, I just have a little, a few words to explain why we thought they were a good choice. Um, they have brought local, national, international, uh, people, uh, people into our city, uh, they've done, um, John was a James Beard Award finalist, correct, finalist this year, for the past year, uh, they, uh, advocate for sustainability, they advocate for helping, um, people in the restaurant industry, they advocate for the city of San Antonio, and they advocate for our city, Castle Hills. Uh, that was really clear when they hosted a city manager meeting for local cities around the area. And, uh, I understand those city managers were very impressed to be able to come to lunch and have a meeting at Clementine, so that was really great. Uh, they've helped with, uh, Fiesta Castle Hills, they've been a sponsor, they also donated food when we had a kickoff party. Um, Elise is very involved in the, well, she's been very involved in the Women's Club, she's supported what we've done when we did our child safe posters. They turn around, they have a program where they sell, share some of the benefits from selling wines, bottles of wine, and that she donated to that cause since the Women's Club was doing that. Uh, John is on our Economic Development Committee, I believe, so we feel like we've picked a really good group of people to be our, uh, grand marshals, and so we were excited to announce that to you today. And here you go. Thanks for helping us, we appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Crawford, and thank you to, uh, Chef John and Chef Elise Russ, aside from everything that they say and do, uh, for the city of Castle Hills, they really step up when we had our energy outage and, uh, I guess February 2021, they went into the restaurant and cooked up meals for staff that had to work during that, the freeze that week, and then also for, uh, people that were in the shelter here, so, uh, can't think of a better corporate citizen, small business citizen here in Castle Hills, so thank y'all so much, and we look forward to celebrating your future successes as well. Okay, folks, we'll move on to the consent agenda, Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Danes on favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Uh, first time you business discussion and possible action on waiving the prohibition against sale or consumption of alcoholic beverages within 300 feet of a church or public school during Fiesta Castle Hills event, April 20th, 2024, uh, this is something that we've seen throughout the years, this is a temporary waiver so that we can offer the sale of alcoholic beverages, uh, for the participants, uh, for this day and this day only, we have a motion? Ms. Danes? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Danes, and that's a second by Mr. May. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Uh, next up, we have discussion, possible action on resolution number 2024-01-09, adopting an amended restated council relations policy and code of ethics for the city council. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, in recent weeks, uh, council member Haley and I have been making our revisions to the, uh, code of ethics and code of conduct policy, and mostly they're just formatting changes, I'm adding links to the, uh, code, uh, provisions that are cited in there, so you can look them up as you're reading the document. But as of right now, we would just, uh, we would like to table the, uh, the motion, uh, we would like to table this item for next month's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, Mr. Schnell, you have to remind me, we need a vote on that, do we have a second?
It's just like a motion, yes, we need a second, and then we need a vote, there is no discussion on a motion to table, however, so, Mr. Smith's comment is, could be considered the motion to table, if there's a second, then you can vote on the motion to table.
I second.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Uh, next up, we have discussion, possible action on authorizing city manager to advertise for bids and for the drainage improvements and the street reconstruction related to the Northmantan, Carrollwood, and Glen Tower, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council, this is, um, just authorize, uh, myself as city manager to advertise for the bids for the next phase of drainage improvements and street reconstruction, this will involve, uh, Northmantan reconstruction of the street, and then drainage improvements, and then Carrollwood reconstruction of the street, drainage improvements from where we stopped just past Banion at Carrollwood to Lock Hill Soma, and then the reconstruction of Glen Tower. Um, some of the background in there, uh, the project, we were looking as we had gone for the COs, the funded for the 23 COs, um, that this was gonna be cost estimates, I think on the Northmantan was around the 540,000 to improve the channel, and then I think about 350,000 to improve the street, and then the 3.2 million to go, uh, down Carrollwood, address Lock Hill, that's in conjunction with the million dollars for Bear County, and then the 800,000 from the city of San Antonio to fix the drainage at Lock Hill as well, and then, um, Glen Tower, just to reconstruct the street, I think it's estimated about 750,000 there, and so this is all one package bid that we'll be going out for. And the next steps will be, um, getting, um, funding agreements with the city of San Antonio for the dollars that they have committed, and then obviously, uh, enter local agreement with Bear County for the million dollars towards this project as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley, Mr. Joyce?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, motion, I move that we authorize the city manager to advertise for bids for the drainage improvements and street reconstruction related to Northmantan, Carrollwood, and Glen Tower.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce, Mr. May, second, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstaining? Okay, Ms. Greg, you see that Mr. Smith is abstaining and motion passes?
And again, Mayor, we hope to, um, advertise these bids here soon, um, as early as probably March, uh, some timeframe, start the reconstruction on Glen Tower, there are some utility conflicts with Saws and CPS related to Carrollwood at Lock Hill and Northmantan at Lock Hill, uh, but we'll be working with those entities on this project as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Uh, next up, we have discussion and possible action ordinance number 2024-01-09 banning smoking in the Commons of the city of Castle Hills during a city sponsored event or a city co-sponsored event. I believe we have this one up to clean up the verbiage, is that correct, Mr. Rappley, or Mr. Schnell?
Yeah, this is just.
This was, uh, Mr. May's suggestion that the resolution was fine because it sends a message, the ordinance provides a remedy if people are not responsive to the gentle message in a resolution, because it allows, uh, a citation and a visit to municipal court and possible fine. And that's the, really the difference in this instance between the resolution and the ordinance, the wording is roughly the same.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell, do we have a motion? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we pass ordinance number 2024-01-09.
Thank you, Mr. May, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Next up, we have discussion of possible action on the modification of the 2024 city holiday schedule, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council, this is actually just a modification of the 2024 calendar, um, what we have discussed to staff is, um, currently, they have a floating holiday they, they would need to use, and, um, they've had this annually and it needs to be used by the end of the year. Um, what we proposed here was just a modification for 2024, um, to have that in lieu of, uh, and put in Christmas Eve as a holiday this year instead of the floating holiday. Um, and this will be just for this year, and then the goal is to bring back an updated personal policy manual with an annual holiday schedule for council to approve as well. So this is just a, in lieu of, um, to have Christmas Eve, we already allow, um, in, in most cases, staff to leave early on Christmas Eve, um, Ms. Davis and, uh, Mr. Moreno had surveyed, it's in the packet, all of the city holidays that other cities, um, observe, and I think we're the only city out of 10, there's only one other city that is still open on Christmas Eve. So we thought this would be the best, uh, it does fall on a Tuesday this year and a Wednesday, so that would be, uh, one last day of sanitation collection, but it would be similar to the Thanksgiving week, and I think that once we have this as, uh, an annual, uh, official holiday, Christmas Eve and Christmas, it'll be, um, easily for the sanitation schedule to work, that residents will know that two days in a row, there won't be collections moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council, do we have a motion? Ms. Haley?
I move that the floating holiday, I move that the holiday schedule be modified as described.
Perfect, thank you, do we have a second? Uh, Mr. May? All in favor? Unanimous, uh, next up, we have update by a city manager related to comprehensive plan priorities and discussion and possible action on the comprehensive plan priorities, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council, um, in the back of the packet, I provided a memo that sort of outlined, um, what we would do to update you all, um, over the coming meetings, this would be sort of a standing agenda item as we move through the comprehensive plan priorities, um, as, as last month, the Parks and Projects Commission provided an update and submitted the recommendations, uh, that were described in, in the memo below and the packet. Um, moving forward, this will, like I mentioned, would be a standing agenda item. Um, I, as city manager, will be working directly with Mayor Pro Tim Joyce on individual, in, in individual items outlined in the comprehensive plan priorities as recommended. Um, and what we've come to is if any, uh, priorities require direct approval, um, by the council, whether that's in combination with a policy decision and or funding necessary to move forward with one of the priorities that this would be brought forward to city council. And, um, I know last month, um, what was provided to you all was sort of a breakdown of each priority, and in the packet, I've gone through and basically just updated those statuses of sort of what we know today, um, as far as comp plan priorities. Um, and anytime I'll ask Councilman Joyce to jump in, um, so I'm kind of tag teaming this with him, but, um, if, it, within the, um, recommendation on these priorities, um, you know, instead of just going through, I'm just gonna highlight an overview on some of the ones that actually have sort of a status and update to those. Um, and if there's no red, it's not indicated in red as an update, that means that we haven't sort of started discussion on that or, um, taken any action to present to you all an update at this time. Um, we hope at the next few months that we will be able to populate this document, show a lot of status updates, and hopefully get to a point where we've put completion by each of these priorities moving forward. Um, that might take some time, that might take some dollars associated with it, but I'll, ultimately, that's the goal of the comprehensive plan is to, uh, address the priorities outlined in it. I would say, correct, Mr. Joyce?
Yeah, I think that's a good way of putting it, Mr. Rappley, thank you, it's basically an update on each of the priorities is what, is what Mr. Rappley has done.
So what I'd like to do is kind of go over these kind of quickly here, um, and then, um, we have, you know, as, uh, Mess, Mr. Joyce had alluded to some of these last month, um, the reevaluate the daytime parking zones, particularly near Lee High School, um, I think from RK staff has reviewed the feasibility or moving the no parking signs, and we're talking about Cotillion, Shalimar, possibly Antler, and then our goal is to bring these forward to city council at a future meeting for possibly removing those signs, I've had discussions with, with Mr. Zamorón, with Chief Zuniga on this, to see if they're even necessary at this time. And so if we come to that point, we'll bring it in front of council to have that approved by you all, which would eliminate the signs at that point. Reevaluate citywide speed, uh, 30 limit, as you, as you know, um, I think, you know, Councilman Joyce, Councilman May, Mayor, and I, I think we're on council when we first started this discussion about coming and putting a comprehensive speed together. Um, our engineers have all the related data, uh, and so they're reviewing that and looking at any other areas that they need to, to bring a, uh, recommendation forward, uh, hopefully to have a comprehensive speed of 25 across the city. So I'm hoping in the next month or two, that'll be presented here at a city council for approval. Um, we have continued to support Advocate VIA Trans, which serves the more vulnerable members of the community. Um, I know that, that VIA has a number of meetings coming up about their projects, programs. Um, I, I know that, um, Mayor Trevino and I have a meeting here soon with VIA, and then they have another, uh, community, um, meeting for projects and, and programs, uh, as well, and I was gonna get that to city council for anyone who wanted to attend. But I think that's just in our governmental cooperation, working with them about any impact on services or any needs we need from VIA for Castle Hills. Um, the one about the city should develop an ongoing relationship in ISD, local private schools, in order to build partnerships, help create connections. Um, I believe we've established, i- it's also to citizens, uh, propose a development artists in school programs, coordinate with CHCO art committee. Um, I know that there's been a subcommittee developed for the Parks and Projects, I believe, to address the implementation of public art sculptures, uh, scul- soul, art sculptures in the Commons. Um, I know that, um, we've met once, I, we haven't had a meeting since then, but that's sort of the basis for, uh, public arts promotion in Castle Hills, so. And then, um, the item about, um, zoning commission recommendation, city council pertaining to tax exempt, uh, media and tenure properties, item G, um, that'll eventually be directed to zoning for review and consideration, and then whatever they recommend will obviously be in front of you all as council. And then I know that the Economic Development Committee will also be able to comment on this as well before it reaches city council. We talked about H, consider a free energy audit from CPS, um, and then staff will be contacting CPS to come out and provide an audit at City Hall, uh, the fire department about the energy utilization, uh, to see where we go from there. Um, consider an irrigation assessment from Saws with the goal of reducing water consumption, eliminating irrigation sectors. Um, staff actually recently met with Saws regarding their drought management improvement plan. Uh, this will be considered by Saws and the city of San Antonio in the future, which may involve an impact fee to customers. Uh, Saws currently has a number of educational programs related to consultation audits and or rebates related to residential irrigation and consumption, uh, some of those I've asked for so we could start putting those on our website, start putting those in the reporter. But apparently, uh, Saws is working on a plan that'll be coming forward, that'll be approved by their board, city of San Antonio, about how they address drought measures in the future, so. Um, the other one here that I have, uh, M, consider dark sky initiative that benefit military wildlife, uh, I have down here, staff will work with our city attorney to review what other cities and similar ordinances, possible changes to the chapter 50 in reference to lighting. Um, going down to P, we have inspect and maintain the drainage, Northmantan, Lock Hill, to Antonium, key clear of obstruction. Um, I think part of this will be addressed in the Mimosa-Cremaria Drainage Project, um, we're about ready to have our new engineers assist with this project and moving forward, uh, and then the section behind Aggie Park, I think ultimately is having one of our engineers assess the area to ensure that, um, the, the, um, the drainage, uh, sediment that comes behind there doesn't continue to stack up behind Dutch Brothers and HEB and so on, um, which Mr. Harada scheduled to clean up in the next month, however, I think we need to take care of the problem directly behind Aggie Park, and that's actually getting our engineers to assess what needs to be done to, um, constrict or hold any sediment instead of it going down that channel. And I think part of that too, I know Mr. Joyce is, uh, will, will be meeting with me and the engineers to talk about the possibility of incorporating a linear park within that Mimosa-Cremaria Drainage Project as part of this as well. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct, Mr. Rappley, and the, the exciting thing about that is that that has the potential to tie four neighborhoods together. Because that channel actually starts at Lock Hill and runs west across Military and then across Cremaria and all of that area, it's a West Avenue. Uh, it connects to the channel that runs in front of Antonian, then goes behind Antonian, connects to that area that he was talking about, that's kind of a problem. And then under the highway and into that drainage itch, uh, beside HEB. But one of our, our guys on the, uh, Comprehensive Plan Committee envisioned that area as a, as a beautiful, huge linear park, that monstrous, ugly drainage channel, and he had examples of it. And so, anyway, that's, you know, it's kind of a dream, but I, I think perhaps this is a first step to see if first, first of all, if a linear park is even feasible. Can it handle the hydraulics that are necessary to have whatever the, the maximum flow of water is for 10-year storm or 50-year storm, whatever the design parameters are going to be? Is it even feasible to think of something like a linear park under those circumstances? So that's the first question that has to be answered, and I think that's the idea of this, I, this suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Uh, item Q here, we have the city should consider an Arbor Day off other celebration for the more ordinances, city programs, uh, treating Oakwood, other diseases, um, maintaining cannibial heights that will allow city vehicles, and this is fire and sanitation, staff, um, will bring forward a plan, um, involving, uh, to become a tree city like Chavano Park has adopted, um, last year, the city council moved forward with strengthening the Oakwood ordinance and the development, uh, of a more robust tree ordinance, um, last year as well. And then, um, under F here, we had, um, many certification exists, we talk about Texas Scenic, Scenic City, Tree City, Bee City, Green City, how we become or have involving one of these designations, uh, staff will look at the review of the feasibility of, of getting one of these designations, see if it's applicable to Castle Hills, and then, um, obviously, staff will work with any council member who wishes to, um, see a certain designation take place that would follow it under the umbrella of this comprehensive plan priority as well, and then move that forward to bring to council for consideration in the future. Um, we talk about priorities already underway, under A, about the Commons, um, that we've been working with, um, the Parks and Projects on a concept plan, uh, which would have multiple phases to show certain amenities, where we're talking about shade structures, uh, stage, sculpture pads, restroom facility, and then possibly taking phase two into the vacant lot behind Public Works to have certain inti- amenities. Um, s- staff has worked with half engineering on the concept plan for the Commons, which details future amenities within the Commons. The plan also includes, uh, phase two, which would be the utilization of the vacant lot. Next items for consideration, review potential costs related to the installation of shade structures, a restroom, trail connecting behind the Commons, uh, the vacant lot for phase two, also the cost of the sculpture pads. Um, right now, staff, uh, our engineers, as a part of the concept plan, will be itemizing all of those, putting a cost to it. What we'll do is go in front of the Parks and Projects Committee for consideration, and whatever comes out of there will eventually come to council for decision, uh, for a final decision, and then, of course, the funding approval of any such amenity as we move forward with the Commons. The design, uh, proposed concrete channel, this is, uh, East Castle to, to West Avenue, like we had just talked about, this is part of the Mimosa-Cremaria Drainage Project, um, we'll be, actually be meeting with our new engineers on this project next week to discuss, um, if you recall, we've had that sort of on the, the back burner, the design was about 60 or 70%. Um, but now, what we'll do now is Councilman Joyce and I'll sit down, talk about linear, uh, park incorporation, we need to speak to Saws again because of the sewer, um, easements that they have there, and get this project back on track and get it going. Um, so that would probably take care of, uh, item B under priorities already underway, uh, for that category. Um, we have priorities with urgency, um, I think there was a description here about recent deterioration of security, Jackson Keller Commission proposes that security component, uh, priority six be moved up for immediate action, uh, convene a series of meetings with CHPD, possibly SAPD, local experts, um, provide better security for the citizens, Jackson Keller area, prove lighting, improved lighting, security cameras, additional patrols. Um, I put here as an update, staff will be meeting with, you know, RPD on possible ideas, this may include additional patrols, a neighborhood watch, uh, directing CPS to do an illumination study to improve the lighting in the area. Uh, may also involve the need to engage, in, engage District One council member in the city of San Antonio to discuss possible improvements along Jackson Keller corridor. So I think that, and getting San Antonio involved is the key to improving the corridor, um, especially from west to Blanco in this case. Um, and then here, under B, it says it's further recommended the architectural team be engaged to provide a comprehensive analysis, possibly use a consultant for this study of this corridor, um, that would, um, that would obviously be a cost, I think staff would research the feasibility of a consultant, uh, address this priority, possibly look at the costs associated with it, and then what San Anto- what role San Antonio could play in this, whether that's a cost or some type of work that they may need to do in this corridor. Mr. Joyce, does he have something on that?
No, thank you, man.
Okay. Under here, under economic development, um, I have here that it's underway, um, one of the things we've done here is actually, if you recall, in the approved budget, we put a line item in for, uh, some costs related to the EDC, uh, and their, their efforts, and, um, and then attracting high-end retailers is another recommendation advocated by the plan, Castle Hills is already a destination, fine dining, like we talked about. Uh, one goal is to bring in high-end businesses, could benefit from the central location, access to highways, similarity, addition, fine restaurants. Um, if council, if you're not aware, you know, we did a retail study done by the retail coach to assist. If council, if you're not aware, you know, we did a retail study done by the retail coach to assist with related data to identify retail gaps, opportunities, and they developed a retail profile in Castle Hills. So if anyone's interested in seeing that, I can send that to them. But, uh, Mr. Joyce provided that to the EDC for their review and study as they move forward. Mr. Joyce?
Right, yeah, I just want to say that, um, the gentleman who produced the study, Aaron Farmer, we're going to invite him to the Economic Development Committee to present that thing. Cause as Ryan said, it's, I mean, it's data. And somewhere in there, there's a story and somebody has to explain that story to us. But anyway, it's really quite exciting to, to think that we can identify where folks are coming from and where they're going to with respect to retail.
And then, um, under item D, we talk about parking requirements should be studied, um, probably under the zoning commission. Similar residential parking ratios be studied to provide no more than what is needed. With insurance, the ban of overnight street parking will not be jeopardized. The current no parking zones should be evaluated to determine if they're still appropriate for current conditions. And then I just have staff or research feasibility consult, of, of a consultant to address this priority, see if there's any costs associated with it. One thing I didn't put down, that obviously this is something that will probably, if necessary, be needed, re-reviewed by our zoning commission and then made a recommendation on that to city council. Go ahead, Mr. Joyce.
Just one, part of what's driving that suggestion that we look at parking is John Russ's comment, uh, a month or two ago in our economic development meeting, that if he had more parking, he could open for lunch. And because he doesn't have parking, he can't open for lunch. So I, it, it might be worth looking into how many others are in a similar plight and if there's something we can do about it.
Item F here, it, we have, it says consider a higher grant writer or staff. The position could also, um, work with the Castle's Business Association, set up events, keep track of membership. And I wanted to put an update here and reminder that half engineering has staff, has grant writers on their staff. And, uh, it's kind of one of the reasons we have selected them for any grant opportunities we can go after. And so, um, for any projects related to the comp plan priorities or other considerations of grant assistance for the City of Castle Hills, at that point, staff will engage, um, half to assist us with any grant we wanted to pursue, whether that was for the comp plan or any grants related to Castle Hills and other areas of the organization. And then, uh, priority two, we have branding. You know, we, we've, we've done, um, some areas of branding here in Castle Hills. But I think ultimately in the comprehensive plan, this talks about developing a strategy that would include a new logo, you know, treatment, uh, of city entrances, highway entrance, overpass signs, and basically coming up with that branding design. A few years ago, um, we had a meeting with, um, Creative Civilizations here in Castle Hills. They provided a, um, they developed a, um, a package for consideration for branding and cost, and, um, at the time, it was not moved forward. I am working on reaching out to them to see if we can circle back with them, have a meeting, see if they can develop a similar plan. And of course, this would be a funding cost and it would be back for city council's consideration in the future. Mr. Joyce, anything on that one? Priority three, green space. I think in discussing with Mr. Joyce, this is an idea of looking at whatever green space we may have available in the city. From that standpoint, whether it's CPS events, drainage channels, turning them into linear parks. And so what we'll try to do is work to identify any potential green space in Castle Hills, uh, through a study to determine if there are any viable locations for these linear parks or other quality of life amenities in the city. So I think that best sort of illustrates the green space item, so. I know I ran through that pretty quick, council, and, um, the, these are just what, as we discussed last month, as putting an update or status to them. And so I think the idea is having a standing agenda on this, and I could probably format this with certain updates and just a presentation only. But I was trying to keep it within this document, so council can see updates, statuses, and or eventually completions on this particular document as we move forward. So I don't think there's any action on this, it's just a matter of updating council tonight. And then hopefully, as we move forward, will we bring in items for you all to approve, which ultimately means that we're taking, uh, and addressing the priorities outlined in the comprehensive plan. Mr. Joyce?
Thanks for that, uh, quick summary, uh, Mr. Rappley. The only other thing I wanted to say was that I, I appreciate Councilwoman Haley's comment last time about, uh, people not knowing about this. And so, Mr. Rappley and I were talking about the idea, and I think we'll kick it around with Parks and Projects this coming weekend. But the idea may be of producing some sort of little video that sort of walks through some of the areas of the city and, you know, here's what we have in mind for here, and with a picture from the comprehensive plan or something like that. Or just a more of a visual look at what we have in mind, what the, what the plan suggests. We have a star in mind for our video. I don't know if he's available.
Anything for the community.
Anyway, um, I agree that it needs to be more in front of the folks, and that may be one way, perhaps some posters around here, you know, or in different areas around the city. Maybe some of our business folks would be willing to put up a poster, you know, talking about the comprehensive plan, discussing where we might find information on it, things like that, but, uh, but that's something that, uh, that I, I think we need to improve.
That might be sort of what I could see as like a PR type of thing, and that's maybe some component we talk with them about branding, PR, uh, with the creative solutions.
Oh, that's a great idea. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce and Mr. Rappley, council. Any questions, comments before we move on? Okay, uh, Mr. May, I had.
I had a small thought. I just wanted to thank, uh, Ryan for the next bit of it, because this really is kind of a roadmap of what we should look at in the next twelve months. And again, I'm going to challenge all of us here bits and pieces of it and put it in actual ordinances or resolutions and then go along. And I was particularly by the thought on how we brand the city. And I just encourage, uh, everyone involved to get creative with this. Not, uh, binary decisions. Arbor City. Whatever kind of city we want, or it's the B city, whatever kind of city we want. So let's, um, let's focus on that, because branding is important.
Thank you, Mr. May. Okay, uh, we will proceed to announcements by mayor and city council members on items that community interest. Mr. Smith?
Uh, I'd just like to state that my abstention from the, uh, from the putting out for bids is not related to, in any way to how I feel about street improvements, rather it's because I live on one of the streets involved. Uh, other than that, happy new year, everybody.
Ms. Haley?
We had a gentleman speak at the Castle's Garden Club today who does all the social media, very involved with the San Antonio River Authority. And there are lots of interesting things that tie into some of what we're talking about. And one thing he said was, is you have to tell people seven times. You know, you've got to repeat, 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 and that's what he does all day long. And so it was very interesting and I'll, I'll encourage you that, I, I learned a lot today about the River Authority. You get that magazine that comes to your mailbox, you go, mhm. And then when he brought the pictures, the pictures. And, oh, so that's what you're talking about. It was really, really an eye-opening thing. It was a, it was a great, uh, informational thing and very entertaining. So I was happy to have been there today and we've, we've got a lot to get excited about. And I think that when you were talking about people knowing, this is something worth getting excited about what's going on here and what all we're offering to our residents and to the whole community. So appreciate you, Mr. Joyce, for all you've done and Mr. Rappley for putting some, uh, status updates on all of this, so it didn't feel like it was just a, here, here we go, you know, I, I, I have a, I've, I've, I, I, I'm excited, can you tell? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remind everyone in the community, we'll have a first hard freeze test next Monday night and Tuesday, so good weekend and get out there and wrap the pipes.
Good idea, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Rappley for bearing with us during all of this comprehensive plan stuff. He's been a terrific, um, worker to help out and, uh, creative mind to help us figure things out as well, so. Thank you, Mr. Rappley. You've done a tremendous job. Appreciate it.
Ms. Danes?
Yes, I want to say thank you to, um, Mr. Rappley and to, um, Councilman Joyce. You guys have put so much work into this and I love seeing these updates. I agree with, with, um, Councilman May's, um, wish to get everybody involved and put out some ideas and wrap these into ordinances this coming year and keep this progress going because it's all, it's all such great progress to see. And we could be, uh, Birds and Bees and Tree City for all I know. I think that sounds great. Happy New Year, and we were just talking about the freeze and we have begun getting our plants prepared to come inside. So yes, please be aware that I think it said it was going to be in the mid twenties, uh, Monday night. So it's going to be a very, very cold one.
Thank you, Ms. Danes. I wanted to give a, uh, shout out to the Castle Hills Police Department. About five thirty Sunday morning, uh, they got a burglary alarm and they went out to the Golden Chick on Lock Hill, Selma, only to see a vehicle leaving ever so slowly with the lights off, uh, which made Officer DeNava a little bit suspicious, so he decided to pull the vehicle over, only to find out they had been the ones allegedly to have burglarized the Golden Chick. They matched, uh, the video recordings, so it appears to be them. About ten thousand dollars worth in damage and losses. Uh, and the general manager shared that there was about sixty thousand dollars in damages with similar-looking suspects, uh, and throughout their other San Antonio locations. So, um, I don't know that San Antonio has the response time due to their workload to, uh, make some of those catches, but I'm glad the Castle Hills officers do and so grateful for everything that they did to keep our city safe during the holidays. Mr. Rappley?
No, I was just going to say it is Law Enforcement Day, National Law Enforcement Day, so.
Yes, so thank you, Chiefs Zuniga, for everything that you're doing to keep our city safe.
Can I add one thing? May I add one? And in preparation for the freeze, charge your portable power pack, so you, in case we lose power, you can keep your phone charged. And those little things you kind of don't think about until your power goes out, so I'm, that's one tip I want to remind people of while you're wrapping your pipes, check on all that.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. I will entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. May. Second?
Second.
Oh, man, uh, second by, uh, Mr. Joyce, all in favor? Unanimous at seven fourteen, me is adjourned, everybody. Thank you for being here with us this evening. Have a good night.